I call this December 17, 2012 meeting to order. Ask you all to please stand and recite with us the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll roll, please, Steve.
Crisilius?
Here.
Felthing?
Here.
Schramke?
Shadle?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Chairman Manchester?
Here. Do you have the last motion from the last meeting?
I do. I moved that the reading of minutes for December 3, 2012 be waived and that minutes of said meeting that is prepared by the Secretary of the Approve is written.
Second.
Second by Crisilius. Discussion, additions, or corrections? I'll roll, please.
Tyler?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Felting?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. We have four items of business on the agenda tonight. The first one is application for amendment to a development plan. Get the motion.
Yes, sir. I move that a resolution entitled "A Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Amendment to a Development Plan for Property Located at 3235 Olivet Church Road" be adopted.
Second.
Is this you, John?
Yeah.
Okay. Shadle, second to motion, discussion. Steve?
Yeah, this property is in a mixed-use development. New signage in a mixed-use development requires Planning Commission approval. As you see, the sign is 54 by 100 inches over the principal entrance.
Okay. One sign?
Correct.
Lighted or?
Yes, internally.
Any other questions? I'll roll, please.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Felting?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Well, you have the second motion, the public hearing on the Renaissance Area Master Plan be added to the comprehensive plan.
Yes, I do. I move that a resolution entitled "A Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Addition of the Renaissance Area Master Plan Ramp as an Element of the Comprehensive Plan" be adopted.
Second.
Second by Shadle. Steve, are you the spokesman tonight or somebody else?
Well, I think there's some staff. There is staff from PRDA here, I think, to make a presentation or discuss this with you tonight.
Sure.
So I will turn it off, over to them at this point.
Evening.
When we last met, you made a request that PRDA reconsider a number of the elements of the plan and they may have even been suggested that they be out and out removed from the document. PRDA, an old volunteer board like yourself that meets monthly, took that task on and the amendments that were presented to you, we think substantially meet your concerns. There were several pages, as you saw, that were just completely eliminated. I think just about everywhere there was a mention of a parking structure that was eliminated from the plan. And PRDA took a considerable amount of time to carefully choose some words and those words were meant to reinforce the notion that the plan is highly general and that through implementation is where some of the real hard alternatives and choices will have to be made. I think through the process, some of the specifics of the generality became the topic and that wasn't really, that wasn't really the intent. But we took care to emphasize that in the amended language. Bruce?
Well, I think I'm primarily here to answer questions or give you the PRDA board members' perspective as well as I can. You know, the plan is just that, it's a plan. We're not compelled to do anything because of it, we're not precluded from doing anything because of it. But hopefully it illustrates the shared values of our community regarding Lower Town, Downtown, and the Riverfront. And it should be a point of conversation whenever we talk about a project in that district. You know, does anything that we propose doing moving forward, is it consistent with the plan? Is it consistent with the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish in the plan, which is, I'll remind you, to build more traffic in Downtown and Lower Town, predominantly vehic-- excuse me, pedestrian traffic, and also to make connectivity between Lower Town and Downtown more comfortable for pedestrians. Basically, to give us a more walkable district and thereby a more valuable district to our visitors. So that's our perspective and we're here to answer any other questions about that.
Any comments you want to make, questions really?
I have no questions. I think, Steve, you outlined exactly what we're here for. Did a good job on that.
Thank you. I think the connectivity issues are not really what we had a problem with. Connectivity issues were good. There were good parts of the plan, very good parts of the plan. There were parts of the plan that we were a little bit less happy with. And it wasn't just us. I mean, we've obviously had several public hearings on this.
I could promise you that our board struggled for months and months and months with many elements of the plan and, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces to it. And, you know, they tend to hit topics that people are emotional about and rightfully so. You know, we have a wonderful set of neighborhoods in Downtown and Lower Town and we need to do everything we possibly can to not just protect them but to enhance them. And it's hard to do so and make everybody happy, but this has been an arduous effort towards doing just that.
I take it most of, in fact, all the parking issues have been removed?
I'll refer, I asked Steve to refer you to the page number that I'm going to cite. Essentially, what we have written in the plan is that our big parking lot between Water and Second on Broadway should, it's a valuable piece of property and there may be a point in the future when we find a more valuable way to use it. But in doing so, we should always respect the fact that we need parking downtown and the people who are adjacent to that land have view sheds that we should do everything in our power to protect. And that's not an amendment, that was in the first iteration of the plan. The problem was, we say things like, we want to protect everybody's view shed, and then we show an example of something that really doesn't respect that. And that was our mistake and that's why it's not in there anymore.
I think that was a big help because I think most of the comments, well, not most, but a lot of the comments that we heard during that both public hearings were comments relating around the parking area, the view of the river, and also from tenants that live downtown who ultimately had some concerns along those lines as well as empty property.
Absolutely. That's, like I say, it was something we always discussed in the meetings when we were going through the ramp process. The idea that although that's a valuable piece of property, the view sheds that surround it are, you know, in some cases stunning and it's why people come downtown.
I have one other question that may be answered and I missed it. And that's with regard to the open spaces that are currently used for things like barbecue on the river. What's the plan now? Because before then, if I understood correctly, that kind of got wiped out. Those areas kind of got wiped out and were not available for those kinds of activities. Is that still true?
No. Part of barbecue on the river is held on private property.
Yes, okay.
So there's nothing we could do about that. We never had a conversation that I recall where we had any intention of eliminating public space for festivals.
Well, the parking lot.
Well, yes. But the thing about the parking lot was, we said in the document, there may be a more valuable way to use the space. We should always respect the fact, we need parking, we need open space, and we need to protect the view sheds. And then we allowed the developer of the plan, the author of the plan, to put in the parking lot as an example. And that's all he meant to do was use that picture as an example of a way you could use that space. Well, it was probably the worst example we could let in the plan because it doesn't allow for barbecue on the river and it doesn't protect view sheds. So I think that will always be something that we talk about here in City Hall. Although we have opportunities to develop or build something, we also have any number of elements that the community really wants to protect and barbecue on the river would be primary among those. If we can't find a good home for our festivals, we're not doing ourselves any favors by developing a piece of property.
Yes, because I think one of the things that helps a downtown area together, people, there's things like the music festival that you, when you close the streets over on, where is it on? I can't even remember the one.
In Lower Town?
In Lower Town. And other activities that are around it where you can draw a larger crowd. I think plans need to be there such that it's conducive to have them there, that they want to come there. And I think the more people we can get to downtown, the better off we're going to be.
To the person, every member of the PRDA board is a longtime Paducah resident that lives and/or works in Lower Town and Downtown. We understand where the values of our community are, we understand why people love our districts and how they like to use them. So we'll always be respectful towards those issues.
I guess the question that a lot of people have asked me is, are there already plans to develop the block?
Absolutely not.
That the city owns?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That's what a lot of people have asked me, is there something going on that we don't know about?
No.
Which brings me to one more question. I'm not trying to occupy everything, but is there money approved for any of this?
Not $1.
Not $1? So it's truly planned?
We couldn't, I mean, PRDA doesn't have a budget. We couldn't buy Street Sign Number One for the district if we wanted to.
Are you planning to apply for grants? Are you planning, is part of the process to have a plan to apply for that?
That's a question probably better directed at the city manager. But he knows that we're looking for vehicles to be able to fund priorities as we see fit, any number of things. I don't think you're going to see PRDA going out and doing things like streetscaping. I think that a lot of things in the plan are going to end up on the desk of a department head in the city. It might be on Steve's or might be on city engineers. But so many of the things are kind of something that need to come out of City Hall because there's technical expertise that go into it. You know, if you talk about traffic flow, you might want to be talking to the city engineer because he understands it better than any of us do. So there are many, many things that just need to have the technical expert involved. So I think the city managers could be directing a lot of that traffic.
Any other questions? We might have some.
Thank you.
Stand by. Anybody else would like to speak? Anybody else? This is a public hearing. You want to say something? How's the time? Sir?
I have a question, thanks Bob Hopper. If some of the previous--
We can't hear you. Sir, I'm sorry. Come forward, please.
We were having some sort of trouble hearing from up here, too. I'd raised a question about whether the concept of the linkage that hadn't focused my mind enough of the existing strength along the Broadway spine, which may have been technically outside the purview of your plan, I don't know. But there seemed to be a lot or considerable buy-in from members of the commission about the existing strength of the downtown Broadway spine kind of being ignored in favor of a very narrowly focused linkage pattern. Was that addressed in any of the revisions at all or is that just outside the scope of what you were doing? Where you are on using the Broadway corridor a little more in this linking downtown, the government district, the Riverfront, and Lower Town?
I'm going to have Steve jump in on this one, but we did have conversations. There's an element of the plan that's called the binding and the idea is that if you build a, for lack of a better term, kind of a square of blocks that are accentuated, that look like they're places you're supposed to walk, then adjacent areas will grow as well because you're building the pedestrian traffic. Our first shot at that was more of, to Mr. Hopper's point, making sure that a north-south street was predominant and a east-west street was predominant. East-west street would have been Broadway, the north-south, we talked about six, or six and second, things like that. In the end, talking about that issue a lot with the author of the plan, we felt like the idea of building that strong binding area that would kind of touch several areas would be a better idea. And Steve, I'll let you jump in on that.
There was, really the basis of it was, to his question, was when you think about moving pedestrians down, you get sort of a, and the best tool we use is really that physical streetscape design. When you build something and it just says to people, there's something here important, they cared enough to make a good sidewalk with attractive landscaping and signage and lighting, that, two things, it's not cheap to do. The product we have downtown is very expensive and it would be impractical to think that we could, throughout the 150 square blocks of the entire Renaissance area, that you could treat that to every block. But even if you did have that kind of money, you would dilute that messaging, that we want you to walk this way. So we tasked him with finding the right ones to do that encompass the entire area, but the most strategic streets that will message to cars and message to pedestrians to walk this way. And it's all within a, you know, with eyesight of almost the entire district. So it was, the plan is an economical way to have the influence you want on the entire area. We know that the toughest problem we see and we hear from people in the districts, particularly business people, it's so hard to get people to cross Third and Fourth Street. Do a good job of capturing visitors and walkers to downtown, but you tend to see that concentration of activity between the river and Third Street. And we haven't done things to make it friendly for pedestrians to walk on any other street hardly than Broadway. And we certainly don't make it easy for them to cross Third and Fourth Street. So that's the, that's part of the strategy is to get them to do that. Quilt Museum captures 3,000 to 4,000 people a month, unique visitors that come to the community. And they park right there at the museum and then how many walk back into the district? I can't say that we see that a lot and I think it's because the busy streets without a place to cross safely, just it's a psychological barrier. There's nothing built into the street that says, there's something here for you to see, there's something here for you to experience. So that's the strategy.
How much leeway does the state give you to do anything?
Well, I don't think there was a single element that was introduced that the state hasn't allowed in some other jurisdiction. The consulting engineer is from a large firm in Kentucky with previous roots with the city of Louisville and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. That was a thing that the PRDA board instructed to them. Don't give us things that we can't do. Don't give us things that are impossible. Not saying that everything is going to be easy and I'm certain a number of things will never be realized, but that doesn't change the fact that there's, you can pick enough of things out of the generalized plan for a future implementation that will make a real difference. And that's what they're trying, what we're trying to do.
Many of the comments that I've heard in previous public hearings have had to do with renovation versus new building and the need to renovate properties along the Broadway corridor and really focus on that as a means of redeveloping downtown as opposed to building new things. Not saying that there couldn't be a mix of both, but I'd like to know what the plan, what your real focus is, PRDA's focus.
In a word, I would say both. There is, the historic buildings, they're the critical mass. They're the star of the show, if you will. There's a few stars of the show, but the historic buildings are key players. And we dare not, I don't think, lose another one. But the buildings that we tend to see vacant, they're not rent-ready. And the ones that tend to be vacant tend to be very large. So you will see in the strategy that the plan talks about is, yep, we're going to have to land bank some properties like we did in the mid-'90s, like we did in the early 2000s in Lower Town. The only way to break some of that cycle of a desperate situation is for the city to step in, buy those properties, stabilize them, wait for something to happen, and, well, I don't want just passive, but recruit people into those, that you've bought down some of those costs of acquisition and environmental cleanup, roofs. When we've done that in the past, we've been pretty successful at it. The Columbia remains a one that has a lot of focus on it right now. But imagine if that were still in private hands, you know, the situation would be very much worse. There would be no opportunity or the opportunities to save it become very difficult. So the plan says, you got to have infill. That infill attracts some developers. We frankly haven't had too many opportunities in too many places for that. We've been focused for a number of years on the historic properties, but you really have to have some diversity in your strategy to be open to new development. And the, and when you see the amendments, I think particularly as it relates to the city-owned assets, the private assets that are vacant, I should hope people would build on them. That's the best thing that could happen for downtown. The city-owned assets, it's a little bit more complex, certainly because of the parking element. So in the amendment, you know, it laid out a, you know, a number of tests that you have to decide before you implement anything and the impact of any proposed project that it might have on vacant historic buildings. And if it looked like it was going to steal or move an investment opportunity, then I would say that would be a negative for whatever that particular project was. I don't think all projects will be historic building suitable just because of what the use might be or what an investor might want to do. But that certainly is something that has to be considered at implementation. And that's why, one more point about the historic buildings. There is the, there's the notion in the plan, and one of the very reasons we wanted you to adopt this was to add amendments to the zoning regulation to implement design guidelines or consider expansion of the historic zones as ways to reinforce and protect the historic buildings.
So are you proposing that, for instance, a B-to-T zone be changed to a historic zone? Just asking.
I would think that would be certainly worthy of consideration. I think in Paducah, we've had good success in the historic zones. I think the first thing you hear is, we don't want to over-regulate. But I think the fact is, when you look at the regulated districts, particularly the H1 and the H2 zones, which are hard-regulated, have high values and the best occupancies. So it would be hard for me to see where adding that extra layer level of protection could harm the downtown. But like everything, we take hard looks at that. And I also think, as Steve and I have talked about that issue, some of that grassroots has to come from the merchants themselves and the building owners. They're going to have to see some value in that.
I'm kind of confused about the town square concept. On the proposed new page that's been handed to us, we're still referring to the town square. And I don't recall exactly the parameters, like there's like four square blocks. And that was, that to me was, and I think you explained it, somebody was looking for a word to call something.
Right.
The actual concept of it and what it is and what is proposed are way separate things. I don't know what you call it, but it's not a square, it's a square. And people thinking of it as a binding by simply calling it a square doesn't have it glued all together, I feel. So what I want to know is, what exactly is the concept other than to bind the two areas together?
Do you want to take that one?
Run with it.
There were words used that I think, because of the choice of the words, particularly the word "binding" and particularly the phrase "town square," that people ascribed meaning to it that really wasn't meant. Both things really meant area of focus, that key parts of the strategy to improve for the betterment of the entire district. The binding, you know, we talked about in terms of a pedestrian strategy, but it was also part of a development strategy. And that strategy that said, if you build the core, reinforce Broadway, the blocks immediately to the north of it, then you have a positive impact on the entire district. It doesn't mean that de-emphasizes the district as a whole. It means the place to start to say, this is what we fix. This is where we put the emphasis. If we, if we fix the middle, the, the edges will, will begin to fill in and rely on that, that middle core. Our middle core has only really been Broadway in a sense, when it, when it comes to downtown. When, and when you, when you look at a map and you, you see the, um, um, the, the grand core of, of, of historic buildings, you go about a half a block each way and it's, it's, it's gone. It runs out and, and you s- you start running into, a lot of it is, is unattractive, um, surface parking lots. And so, um, you know, this is, and, and there's, there's obviously a scattering of, of good quality buildings, uh, in there. But, but this is the, the part that talks about, uh, the way to, to begin to fill that in and, um, and make it all work for the entire district. It's, the, the to- the town is, as a whole, is, is huge, right? But we want it all to prosper. But you, but you have to start somewhere and you have to put emphasis somewhere so that the rest of it begins to take advantage of it.
So, this is not a ti- this is not a town square in caps. It's a, it's a focus town square in small letters.
I, yes. It was, it was a way to encapsulate-
That's what you said.
A, a group of, of specific projects aimed at a, at a, at an area. It doesn't mean we'll move, we say the courthouse needs to move, uh, downtown or they're rearranging the pattern of the streets. It was just, it talked about a specific, uh, part of town that, uh, uh, needed attention for the, for the rest of the area to prosper.
I guess I'm kinda confused about this because you just got through saying that the vast majority of the activity that goes on, goes on in this area. And that there, the properties further out on Broadway are really the areas where we have the problems. I guess I'm confused about why this area was picked as opposed to a little bit further out on Broadway that really does need help.
Go ahead.
Well, um, I'm not sure if this could answer your question, Kathy.
Okay.
Um, whenever I think of, of downtown, especially the first couple of blocks of Broadway, um, I think about, um, those, those nights, especially this time of year when there's a big event at the Carson Center. And I can guarantee you, if there's an event at the Carson Center, that, that our parking lot between Water and Second on Broadway will be full. It might be overfilled. And I always scratch my head because we have another parking lot exactly the same distance from the Carson Center. It's a city-owned lot at Third and Kentucky. And you go to that same lot, it'll be nearly empty. You know, there is zero focus over there. And all the focus in downtown Paducah is within a couple of blocks of the lot downtown. If, we have a binding now. It's called Second Street. It binds everything in a really, uh, dense area. People park at that lot because they can walk down a safe-feeling street and they can walk by restaurants and, and, and other amenities that they want to go to, which is the opposite of walking down Kentucky Avenue where, you know, you don't feel all that safe crossing the street. You're not sure you're supposed to be walking down there. And there's nothing useful to do between the parking lot and the Carson Center. So, no matter where you put the binding, the idea is that you make a place feel like you should walk there. You make it, make it feel like it should be part of the route and then you build those other amenities. Second Street was improved before all the private investment came there. It came there because it was improved.
Exactly.
And, and if I were good, if I could describe a feel for what we're trying to do, it's to pull that feel of Second Street west. And I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, I know. I agree with you totally. I mean, basically, you've just reinforced exactly what I said, which was, I wish the focus was a little bit further west instead of in that area that's already thriving. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
That's what my concern is, that, you know, why, why are we focused here when we could be focused a little further out? Like you were talking about.
Truthfully, I think that we've, as a, as a board, allowed too much focus on that area, on that, on that, that one element of it. Because, um, all we recognize it as is a potentially very, very valuable block. And in my thinking, if we do our jobs well and, um, the, and developers buy in and, and if PRA does their, their job well and we, we build more traffic farther west in the district, then all of a sudden that parking lot becomes less important. You know, that parking lot's important because there are all these great restaurants and shops and a Carson Center right there. If somehow we're successful enough to, to pull that focus west, then we don't need that lot. And then we can do something, any number of things with it. And, and all we're saying is that's something to consider in the future, is that, that there is some value there if, if, if we don't need that density of parking there. But while we're thinking about those things, be respectful of view sheds and be respectful of the fact that it's possible to overbuild with new retail and then take away the demand for our historic structures.
Exactly.
But all that is, is specifically said in the document. So, I think there's, I think the way we presented it can be misleading, but I know how I feel about it. I know how my board feels about it.
Well, it's like you look at, you look at the four square blocks in the plan and basically what you've said is that's where we wanna focus. And I, I never really understood that because to me, that's, that's already one of the best places in, in the community, you know? I think it's already very well-developed. It's got a lot of traffic. And like you just said, it, I wish it was, you know, I wish they'd put their little square out a little bit further.
Okay. Anything to add to that?
No. Well, sir.
Um, this proposal, is this-
Wait a minute.
If this is accepted, is this the same as, uh, as a law?
No, that's-
Or is this just a sort of philosophical plan in terms of governance?
It's, it's the latter. It's, it's a, in my mind, it's a point of discussion. When we wanna talk about priorities in downtown, Lower Town, and the Riverfront, it's something to refer back to and say, you know, this is what we value, whether it's in the Lower Town or Downtown. This is what we value. This, like I said earlier, um, there's nothing in this document that compels us to do anything. It's nothing to, that precludes us from doing anything. It's, it's not codified. It's gonna be part of the comprehensive plan for the city, hopefully. But, um, no. It's, it's a, it's a point of discussion for what our values are regarding our, our districts.
How, um, how much of this document is planned? As for growth, of course, next year we'll discover something new anyway and, uh, it may affect, uh, or some opportunity for us to be understood. Um, if we decide that black streetlands are important, will we not be able to have white streetlands as we put on the grid?
I'm gonna let Mr. Irvin or Mr. Doolittle answer what happens when it becomes part of the comprehensive plan. But as it stands, a master plan, um, I always think about this plan the way I think of the master plan at our community college. Um, I'm on the board of the community college. I've seen the master plan many, many times. The master plan, as it's currently written, did not anticipate the Emerging Technology Center being where it is. It anticipated it being on Friendship Road. Um, when we got that project funded and we were ready to go, we took another look and said, you know, the best place is where it currently is. The plan was, it was, it compelled us to talk about what we had talked about in the past relative to the needs of the college, but it didn't mean we had to build it right there. And that's, and that's sort of the way I think about this plan. It's something that, that should be discussed. It doesn't prevent us from doing anything and it's something that will get discussed. Any element will get discussed seriously when there's funding involved. There's not one thing in this document that's funded. And, you know, I think that's really your answer is, um, it, you know, what would we do if we had all the funds in the world? I don't know because we don't have any. You know, this, uh, this, this is, uh, this becomes something that the, the, uh, elected officials and, and our professional staff will use to drive the conversation.
When I, when I look back, uh, over twenty-some-odd years, and Steve and I do this occasionally, and, and we find old plans, and you page through them and you're like, yeah, yeah, we did that one. We did that one. We did, we did that one. And, and other things, you know, never, never happened. The, the, um, the money never materialized or, or some other opportunity, uh, came along, uh, uh, to make us change our mind. But the, I think the thing that cannot be overlooked either is when the city has that, that plan and its organi- and its all sister organizations and agencies, um, have the, the plan, then you're going in one direction and you're working for something. Because if you're not, if you're not planning to go somewhere, you just kinda sit and do the, the same thing over and over. And if we didn't have any problems, that might be okay. But, but we have issues and, uh, they, they need to be resolved. So, um, it's, it's really important, uh, for the organization, uh, to, to have a document that says, this is what we should be doing. Everyone, you know, start pointing in this direction. It will undoubtedly change the, um, the, the, everything, everything does. Um, but we have seen, when we have a plan, our ability to get funded from other aid from state or, or federal increases exponentially. You're, you're, because you start looking for those opportunities then at that point, particularly on the, on the public infrastructure, things like streetscape. Um, when we, uh, got, I don't, can't remember the number, five to seven million dollars for, for streetscape, uh, in, in the first round, when, when the state started doing that, we were one of the first cities funded because we had a plan. We were, we were ready to go. It was pre-thought out. And we did the plan. We didn't know how long it was going to, to be. And some of you were, were on the board when we did those, those first downtown or waterfront plans. Same, same with the Riverfront. There wasn't one dollar of funding that anybody could see anywhere when the, when the Riverfront plan was, was put into place. We're, we're sitting today with, uh, ten million dollars, ready to begin the first phase.
As you can probably appreciate, we're all about planning. We like it. We're not opposed to it at all. Um, the problem, the problem I have is putting our stamp on a plan that we're not totally happy with. You know what I mean? That maybe there are some things in this plan that we're not real sure, like I just mentioned about the town square. Um, because by putting our stamp on that plan, then we're saying, yeah, this is something we should go for. Do you, how, how would you respond to that?
I would say that we, it should. I mean, then what's, what's the point of doing the plan if, if you're not going to start implementing? Um, but I would, I would also go back to what we said earlier. Then all of the, the harder analyses of, of the various things we need to look at begin, particularly with the city, the city vacant lot assets or, or the parking assets. I think those will be the, uh, singularly the, the most, the most difficult elements. But it's really hard for us to, to go forward with, um, looking or trying to fund, um, like, um, say, say the wayfinding. Can't really, you know, do you really do wayfinding if you don't know if you're gonna implement, um, changing one-way streets, uh, downtown? It's really not a productive exercise. You certainly wouldn't wanna spend money on that until you knew that you were really going to do that. So, there's a lot of sequencing that comes into, into place and, and a lot of other hard decisions that will have to be made by the funding agencies and, and, and primarily the city commission. Um, you know, are we, do we have a plan that we're working from? It's really, um, I, it's hard for, uh, uh, people that, that don't work in that. But, but the elected officials, it's really hard for them to put capital dollars into things that they don't see, um, the point or the plan or, or, or how will this all come together to, to benefit from us. Um, they're very careful, um, about that. So, um, we're going to see, I think, a hot, much higher level of analysis when it, when it comes to actual implementation.
And I'm sure that they will get input from lots of people in the communities.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You have a question?
Yeah, but go ahead.
Question and current.
Why don't you put that language in the plan? It should be, or can't be constantly changed. It's like you just told, it should be a part of the plan.
I didn't understand the question. I'm sorry. Would you come up?
You can change it any time you want in the future.
You can change it any time you want in the future?
That's what it's just.
Well, that's what the comprehensive plan is. It's like a big bowl of clay.
It should be in the plan. You should say that in order to lock up the problem.
What you want.
That's what I'm asking. That's part of the plan. Let's be, have to change it.
That's our problem. Right.
The, um, uh, the state planning statute you work with day in and day out promulgates that, that whole procedure for making those amendments. And I, I understand what he's suggesting, but it's what we do. The, these are, these are always amending and, and changing. Um, I guess that's why it's not, it's not an implementation document. Um, I think, um, though, I would, I would have to sit down and look at it more, more closely, but I think there's language that comes close to saying that, uh, that it's not meant to be permanent and, and unchanging. Uh, but I'd have to sit down and, and look for that.
Sure. Sure. That's, we'd love to hear it.
Oh, question. I guess Steve. That's Steve. Uh, maybe totally stupid and, but wherein the comprehensive plan does this go?
It just becomes a part, a section of the comprehensive-
An addendum.
I'm like, oh, by the way, this, writing this.
Mm-hmm. I would like to add one thing. This really does not become, um, at, when you're doing this, you're not changing the land use objectives. At some point in the future, as implementation would happen for some of these things they're talking about, those type of land use changes or map amendments, if they were required, we don't know, would certainly also have to come back to the Planning Commission, uh, for approval and then ultimately the City Commission also.
And what we've done, what we decided this evening is a recommendation to the City Commission. Is that correct?
No, that, that's incorrect. Uh, tonight, the Planning Commission is considering it and adopting it as part of their comprehensive, comprehensive plan. The state statutes does not require City Commission action, uh, unless you're getting into the goals and objectives, which is not being done here.
Okay. So, what we decide tonight goes into the comprehensive plan and that's it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Likewise, that, that does not obligate the city to implement any of it.
Correct. Yeah.
I understand.
That's, that becomes their choice.
I was trying, I was trying to get my own mind straight.
And maybe we, we didn't say that enough, that, that the mere adoption of the plan does not, does not guarantee that the, that the City Commission will, will implement any of it.
Why don't you come up and speak?
Sir, would you come up so the audience that's watching this on cable can hear your question?
[laughing]
That's all right. Come on up here.
They get us.
The, uh, just to follow this up and make sure that, uh, that I understand. Um, you're saying that there's language-
Um, you're saying that there's language in this document that provides that we can ignore it. We can use some parts of it that work or we can use all of it. And that, in fact, it's, um, an organic document that can be modified as new opportunities present itself. Is that what you're telling me is in this document?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
I think it's stated very well here, that last paragraph, what you're, what you're saying. It says, "Approval of the plan by the Planning Commission does not obligate the city or its agencies to implement any particular action item proposed."
Any other comments or questions? Danny, you wanna summarize this in about three minutes for us? I'm not asking him to do that.
The city's required to have a comprehensive plan for zoning and, uh, this is an element. And, uh, you have to have the el- each element has to have a public hearing before, uh, the element can be approved. And that's what we're doing to maintain the validity of our comprehensive plan.
It's a viable document, in other words. It changes as we change.
Statually, it's required to be reviewed and approved with the elements, uh, periodically to be valid. And there are lots of, uh, zoning actions statewide that have been turned down by a higher court because their Planning Commission did not go in and review the comprehensive plan and keep it up to date and review all the elements as we're doing here to keep- keep it up to date, and review all the elements as we're doing here to keep Paducah zoning valid.
Thank you. It summarizes it very well.
The one thing that I'm sad about is that, I mean, I'm on vacation this week. I came in because I wanted to hear your presentation. I made a point to be here. Unfortunately, there are other people on this commission who are not able to be here because they're out of town on vacation. I would like to propose that we continue the public hearing until our next meeting to give them an opportunity to ask questions as well.
Motion is made to postpone until January the 7th, at which time we will continue this hearing until that date. If we do table it for a date certain, which is what the motion means, I'm not trying to cut off debate, and that's the reason I keep asking you, if somebody has anything they want to say or share with us. Yes, sir. Would you come to the microphone, please?
I live in Lower Town.
Yes, sir.
With the possibility of this being continued until the next meeting, is there a place where the new ramp can be seen by the general public? We're sitting out here without anything.
You don't have a copy of it.
Is it available for everybody to see? Put it online. It is not right now, though, is it? Okay, I couldn't find it today. That's what was bothering me. Okay.
We received it Thursday. That's one of our reasons for being a little reluctant, I believe, because we haven't been able to plug all the extensions into the main plug.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in being able to.
And it's not all that long a document. But as you can see, if you can tell the colors, is that various things have been changed and...
So is the old document of this many pages been?
The old document.
Old document? Has that been tossed out and it's now only that?
No. These are only the changes. That's all.
We will post the amendments, so you don't have to labor through the entire document.
I was going to say, is the entire?
Strike throughs and underlines, so people can see what's changed.
Is the entire plan, though, available somewhere, where if anybody, like a public copy?
On City Line.
Okay.
Online, where, Steve? You got the?
It can be found at paduka KY.gov.
Thank you. Do you all have anything to say before we vote to table this for a date certain?
Did you get a second?
We have not gotten a second yet.
I second that motion.
John?
In respect to what you said, you will get that online, Steve, for the folks that are here and?
I will do that.
Everybody. Thank you very much. All roll, please.
This is the roll on the motion to continue. Crisilius?
Aye.
Feltsing?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Thank you all, and if you'd like to go, we only have two items of business. John, you have the Paducah Preservation Waiver Request at 10116 Broadway.
Yes, I do. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Paducah Preservation LLC for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 100 through 116 Broadway.
Second.
A further move.
Oh, excuse me.
A further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
I still second it.
All right, there are a few questions.
First off, I just kind of want to give a brief summary of what we're trying to accomplish here. Since, I believe Steve has passed out earlier tonight, revised plans that have been revised from your initial, our initial submittal. The initial submittal was just one, and now we have split that up into two separate submittals, with the intent being the same. The property that we're looking at here is the property between, along Broadway, between Maiden Alley and Water Street. It's a three-story building. Well, it's two stories and a couple units on the third floor. The bottom floor is currently occupied with different retail businesses. The second and third floors are currently what is known as the Fox Briar Inn, Bed and Breakfast. I think those are rented out nightly, monthly, whatever is possible. The intent of the owner is to turn all of the units into condominiums where they are able to resell each individual unit. So in other words, a condominium regime would be set up, master deed and declarations, whatnot, according to KRS regulations, to where these individual units may be sold. Currently, they're all owned by Paducah Preservation and just leased. So we have created two documents because this kind of gets a little convoluted. The first document is a waiver of subdivision that abolishes interior lot lines that are currently in place. Right now, there are currently eight lots, as shown on this first document, that are basically demising walls for the current businesses on the first floor only. But they're property lines that are on the, they're real estate property lines. We're wanting to abolish those along with some ingress egress easements in the rear and just clean that up into one rectangular lot. That's the intent of the first submittal. Once that is, or hopefully that will be approved, and once that is recorded, the second, we'll follow up with the second document, which you also have, and it's nine sheets long, nine pages long. The first page, again, basically just a cleaned up survey showing the new rectangular lot, showing just the outer boundary of the property, which does not change. And the remaining drawings, sheets two through nine, are detailed plans of each individual unit on the first floor, second floor, and third floor. We have overall plans of the three floors, and then also further into the document, there are enlarged plans showing more detail with individual dimensions. We have all the square footages outlined, each unit delineated for what will be available for resale, and also all common areas that will be co-owned by members of what will be for some sort of a homeowners association, for lack of a better term. And all those areas are denoted on the plan as well. So again, the intent is to condominiumize this entire property for resale, and we've just kind of cleaned it up by going into two, to two separate documents. The first one on the agenda is just to abolish the existing interior lot lines, as shown.
I just got one comment on that. Steve?
Yes.
Comment here from the staff suggesting that there's some engineering comments to be satisfied with those.
Yes, those comments have been addressed on the new submittal. And also, I'd like to bring to your attention that these plaits also overset down to the fire prevention division to make sure we had co-compliance as it relates to fire separations, and got a clean bill of health from them. So both Engineering Public Works and Fire Prevention has seen these plaits.
What's right this minute, though, is waiver of subdivision?
Yes.
First one's just abolishing.
Just abolish it so it's one big square.
So we just have one square.
Almost square.
Well, rectangle. Rectangular piece of property.
Yep. This is the track that's subject to the condominium.
Right.
For my verification, that third floor is only accessible by steps.
That's correct.
Egress ingress is just a stairwell, that one stairwell.
That's exactly right. From the rear.
Let's don't get sidelined on what's going to be in it till the next one.
Sure.
Okay. Let's first on the motion to subdivide, and then we'll address the next motion. Property lines. Call roll, please, Steve.
Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Feltsing?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Earl, you have the last motion.
I do. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Paducah Preservation LLC for the purpose of re-subdivision of property condominium plot located at 100 through 116 Broadway. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all of the applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second.
Second, but Crisilius. Now, we can talk about what the condos are going to be. So I understand that there's seven on the first floor, eight on the second floor, and three up in the third floor. Is that correct?
Two on the third floor.
Three.
No, there's just two on the third.
All right.
So the businesses on the first floor are going to operate as condominiums?
Well, I would say it'd be up to the owner as to what they do. Obviously, they will be for sale, and I guess it would be their decision as to whether they wanted to continue to lease while they're for sale. I would say that that is a viable option.
So basically, do they plan to convert those open spaces into living spaces? That's where I'm confused.
Well, it's two-story, is that correct?
Two.
No, I mean, the open space from the lobby will be two stories?
That's correct.
I'm actually talking about these things on all these places, like the ice cream shop and...
I guess it would be set up to where they could, they can be sold to anyone, and they could put anything they wanted in there. I would think they're better suited for retail as they are now, or office or whatnot. But if sold, that the new owner, I guess, has the right to do whatever. They could turn it into an apartment or if they wanted, maybe unless I'm...
The major change here is?
Interior wall to interior wall. And they can...
Do what they want.
They've done a lot of detail on here, showing what it is, but they really didn't need to do that. All they needed to do was go from the front interior wall to the back interior wall, and the side interior wall to the other side interior wall.
So...
That's the condo space, airspace only.
And as far as, you know, the way a condominium works, you're really buying the space, not the property.
That's correct. They'll own from finish wall to finish wall, the structure itself would be owned by the homeowners association.
And what's the second floor? Is it?
Residences.
Residences. Those are also for sale?
Yeah, right now, they're leasable with the action tonight. If approved, it will give her the ability to sell them to separate individuals.
So in other words, the property goes from wall to wall and then floor to ceiling?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's just interior wall to interior wall, and interior floor, interior ceiling.
Okay, got you.
Everything else is owned by the condominium. Basically, it becomes a property of the council of co-owners, which is like a homeowners association, except that's what it's called when you're dealing with condominiums.
And the businesses on Broadway, those units will remain the same based on their current address. The units on the second and third floor will be addressed as 108 and Maiden Alley, and then their unit number added to that, say, for instance, unit 201. But their main access point is through the common area from Maiden Alley, so that will be their given address. Although, there are a couple units, 10201 and 204, that have separate private access from Broadway by way of a stairwell.
Be different, is that correct?
Well, no, it'll still be the 108 and Maiden Alley, unit 201.
Is there access on River Street as well?
There is access to unit 200.
100.
I'm sorry.
100 from Water Street?
Yes, 100 from Water Street.
See, isn't there a bunch of other apartments? The old Petter Building, hasn't they done the same thing, put apartments on the second floor?
That's what these are along Broadway. Yeah, there are some, as part of that Petter acquisition, I think there originally were some along Second Street also, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, because they've been down through there. And I think that, and something that has come to mind is where they pick up the trash and all that, because those down there, they had refrigerated units to store their garbage.
That's exactly right. And then, I guess, at the given time where the trash is scheduled for pickup, then it's taken to the street side, but it's stored there temporarily during the week.
Okay.
I have a question about parking. When you're selling condominiums, are you providing parking spaces for these condominiums?
I think they're hoping to park in that parking garage across the street. No, I mean, I'm sure they'll be in the same quandary as everybody else down there right now with, I mean, there's not, that's just a...
In actuality, the businesses along Broadway are not required to have parking. The urban environment there was obviously built before automobile, and we actually tried not to encourage off-street parking along the Broadway corridor. We'd rather have buildings. So even new residential built, not even in this area, but other areas, there's not a parking requirement in the Paducah zoning ordinance right now.
They're not going to do anything like it was done over by, well, where Jerry Montgomery and that bunch live over here on Second Street. They have parking inside.
In the back.
There's nothing like this planned, no.
Nothing like that.
Actually, it's going to stay the same use it is right now until they actually would sell it, and it'll be up to the new owner how they want to use it. But what I would assume is the second floor will remain residential, and the first floor will be retail, just because of the demand.
I doubt if it would really affect too much down there anyhow.
I don't see a lot of that, but of course, we don't know.
Jason, I've got a question. On 112 Broadway, we've got some stairs running up to serve. What does that serve?
It's an up and down unit, is it not? Or no? Is that a...
If I'm not mistaken, Dan, those are closed off.
Maybe that's what the CLO stands for, is closed. Okay.
If you look over on 206, there's no access there. It was just probably, it would have been easier just to leave that off, because like you said, it's not critical.
Yeah, it just confused me.
Any other questions?
One other comment. In setting these, you've got your front wall to wall, you know, running the whole length, but on these others, I'm assuming they are running from front to rear. You have that shown on one of these, but I didn't see it for all of these units. It's 74, one and a half, I think, running front to rear on all of your units along Broadway. And I am assuming some of those on the second floor run, because that appears to be the inside wall for everything. Because they did a good job of putting all of the improvements and everything in there, but like I said, I...
That, to be honest, I don't know that I could answer that without going and looking again. I know a lot of those, you know, there's a lot of variation from unit to unit with ceiling heights and wall thicknesses and different things. I see what you're saying, but I don't know that I can, I don't remember without going back and looking at that.
It appears that, or maybe not, because you've got the common area coming in, beginning on unit 108.
I think that wall for 204 through 207, or 206, probably is a common wall.
And your office is basically a common area, too, that'll be used by everybody.
Yes, and I don't know that if it'll, we labeled it as office now, but it may be, who knows what the purpose or use for that would be.
Maybe car?
Could be, I mean, it could be some sort of a business office, you know?
It could be the office of the condominiums.
Exactly.
It could be.
Makes sense.
Steve, you have any concerns?
No, sir. All roll. Tyler?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Feltsing?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stand adjourned. Merry Christmas.
And I'm not going to be at that meeting next...